And this was the option that was included early on in master planning and is currently approved as part of the land use review and permit for current and helping project. It will include a new natural turf field, improvements with new bleachers, backstops, nettings for protection of the parking lot. And it also has a lot of, it has included in that U-10 soccer, one 10 soccer field. Also designed for the planning of the construction. Option number two is inclusive of upgrade at the Grant Bowl. And in that option, we would be looking at softball facility being down on the existing artificial turf field in the Grant Bowl. The scope would include new lighting, bleacher seating, and improvements to the Grant Bowl to accommodate that. And as you can see in the diagram that was provided, currently they lay out two softball fields that can be played simultaneously. And we would try to choose that as well. Option three, we've been looking at a, this includes the combination of the softball field that would be in combination with the existing baseball field that's already been built out. So the idea here is that the existing layout that we would use for baseball will remain, but we would make combinations within the artificial turf field here for converting that to a softball field. So for things like removing the pitchers mound, posts in the base plate, make interventions for the softball field. And in this option, there's, one clarification would be that in this, that we've talked about that baseball and softball would alternate season, alternate years in terms of the physical field. So softball would play one year, baseball the next, and so on and so forth. They would be alternating.
So a team would have an offsite location for an entire season?
Correct. In option four, the, the, this includes the scope to upgrade Wilshire Park. So as we know, currently the softball team plays at Wilshire Park and is in its existing state. There are some issues with that, not just in terms of the logistics of travel to the Wilshire Park, but also just conditions of the field. So the idea here is that upgrades would be made to make a state-of-the-art facility at Wilshire Park, making that an attractive location long-term. That including, we think, lighting that would be necessary for the overlap of teams there and the use of the park, potential improvements for the natural turf there, bleachers, restrooms, and so on. It would be necessary to make that a long-term facility.
Are there any more questions? Is there any ask to reply to the question?
Yeah, so that's kind of a brief overview. So we just wanted to hit on the options really quick. And you can see there are four options. They each have pros and cons. The team has spent months meeting with different stakeholders, both internal and external stakeholders, and reviewing these options and providing more information and analysis. And there just hasn't been a consensus, this is the number one option that has come out in that process. So we want to do a quick overview, give you more detailed information that are in the packets, but really want to ask questions now or invite questions now and just keep whatever.
And one question about option four, is it assumed that improvements to Wilshire Park would be only paid for by a school district or shared?
I would think that we would be open to looking at sharing, I think there's some other partners that use that, that also may want to contribute to the fact that the improvements would be for them, you know, to improve their playing experience as well.
Is that the same with lighting?
Yeah, we're, we're okay with the lighting, the field.
Is there a pardon upon Paul Pardon for, um, the other option? Can you have some preliminary concept numbers that we had, that we had talked about? And I think we were looking somewhere in the, I think that was talked about somewhere in the three, $5 million range. But once again, very preliminary and definitely need more information and detail to ask.
Just curious, as a con, there's risk of rainouts at Wilshire.
It's a consistent con that we developed with the options for the locations of natural turf. This has a higher probability of rainout versus the artificial turf.
And natural turf is preferred by the softball team?
Correct.
As opposed to the boys?
That's the feedback we received.
Carol, is there any comment on terms of the more detail around that reasoning?
I think that the way that the ball plays off of dirt and turf and grass is very different. So I think the, if you look at, I guess, competitive softball, college teams, I think there's probably a mixed bag, but there is usually a preference one over the other. We didn't look at the option of dirt or natural turf for baseball because it's a multi-use field. It needs to be able to be, and there won't be any rainouts there. So I think the key thing here is the north field was originally planned to be grass, just a natural field because the park also uses it for other things. And the softball team wanted it that way, but I think if we're looking at Title IX, they've got an issue with one team that never has rainouts and one team that does. Then that's played out in other schools too. So just careful about that. That's enough, this is complicated, and that's one of the complications, that even if there is a preference, should we be building one dirt or natural turf and one artificial turf? It doesn't matter.
Is there a Parks recommendation, but is there a PPS staff recommendation on which of the options is preferred?
So we, the, in the materials, we've laid out the, some of the feedback that we've received. And so from, the feedback we received from different PPS staff, there is a disparity about what is the best option. So we don't think as OSM, it's necessarily our, we're in the right position to say that these are the right factors to weigh what is the best for PPS students. We take in the information, we're happy to analyze it and provide the feedback that we get, but we do not have as one piece of recommendation.
Is there a DIO athletics recommendation?
Yes, shout out there, but ours, our recommendation is baseball from Title IX and access, and then the flexibility to have multiple opportunity of multiple users. So we would choose two or four because it has, those give us the multi-use. Two being that by having the turf and softball there and the turf which currently we use it for rainouts because we have a lot of field that is dirt and you can't play in it in the spring. Secondly, Title IX, I, I, with Carol, I think we would be setting ourselves up by creating an advantage or disadvantage, girls versus boys, either direction. And then four would be the same thing, that by turfing Wilshire, we create another opportunity for Grant here to have more access. Currently without lights, they have at least access, probably at least school we have except for Benson and then followed by Benson. So ours would be two for.
Yeah, I would add that, you know, I've been in this process since the very beginning. And at the very beginning, when we, the DAG recommended a softball field, because we didn't have one on site. The girls are walking to Wilshire every day, and it's about a mile away, and the boys have played on site, which we don't own the whole baseball field either. We only actually have a bit, and the park owns the other half. So with the constrained site, 10 acres, and no land of our own to put it on, there was the idea that we could share a field with the park. And then after all the investigation and all that, there's been some complications. But the other issue we have is the bowl. The facilities at Grant are complicated and not great. So I think that's something to be considered, and we have no football stadium, no bleachers, we have no concession stand, no press box, no restrooms on that site anywhere, and none in the plans, even in the remodel. So I think all of that needs to be factored in. And I feel like as a, as a principal, it's been difficult to kind of maneuver through these facility things because it's not PPS property. And we haven't had access to, I mean, just recently met, I'm sorry, yeah, at a meeting, and we got to finally talk and get their perspective on these fields and where they should be located. So it's very complicated, and I don't think it's as simple as should we have a field or not. I think definitely we need softball fields. But we also have this bowl situation where 2,500 or 3,000 people can show up for a football game. We have no, no way to make that site secure or to see who's in, who's out, you know, follow the back, no backpack rule, anything like that. So, and there would, there would have to be some definite improvements to the bowl to allow softball to play there. But maybe it's a bigger project than just let's put softball lines out and put them on the field. It's got to be, there's some safety issues. There's pole ball, the thing where the pole goes in, it's exposed, there's practices going on at the same time. They played there all season, and they're well-versed in all the things, the issues, and safety issues that could come up out there. So it's not just a matter of field. It's a bigger issue than that.
I would, I would ask, what, Carol, after all the things Carol said, in addition, I, I do think that whatever comes out of this, this is an opportunity for us to provide lights. Because again, when it gets, when it gets dark in the fall, Grant is a fan like Benson or the two schools that you're done at four o'clock. There's no, there's no lights. And then to be able to have additional game time, whether it's in the spring, having baseball or softball at the same time, whichever way, even if you put them both on the upper field two there, or down in the bowl, just the ability to have track, track to go later, or softball in the bowl, or a baseball game where you have a football game where you don't have to get out of school at early to be able to have a home football contest because it gets dark at five o'clock. And the only way you can get a football game in is if you start at three and school gets out at 3:15, so you're trying to juggle that. That's just as unfair to Grant, and you don't have that access. Another thing I'd say, they've actually had the opportunity to have what I would call Friday night lights at Marshall, where they've had the opportunity to have the whole student body and their community come out and experience what a normal high school kid gets to experience. And if we have the opportunity to give the Grant community that, I think we should explore that.
So this is nice that the mayor came to our leadership district on Friday, because we really have no strategic planning with Parks partners that I can figure out, picture to figure out how we make the best use of shared resources. That's something we really needed to jump on. I personally just, option two, just having been on the Grant track team way back when with javelins flying and my, my son was a pole alter, I don't get option two and how that could work at all for kids. But that's, that's just me, because I, that field is where javelin and shot put and discus and things like that go flying on a regular basis. I don't see how you could accommodate baseball and softball practices there for everyone else. Maybe you have done that somehow, but I don't, I don't care.
We're not there at the same time, for sure.
Do they share seasons?
Yeah, it's the same season. So what happened this year is, we're, so we're not at the Grant site, so our track team is at Marshall. So we utilized those two softball fields in the Grant Bowl. But there were, Benson was there, and I think there were some youth programs that were also there at the same time. So the issue was not about them throwing javelins, but those people also being hit by foul balls, and those people going on to the field where the softball game is going on because there's no fencing around, keeping people out of the game. But they did play all of their games there this year and practice there in the bowl. But our, if we had lights, I think the idea would be that we would stagger those practices and games so that we wouldn't have track and softball going on at the same time. If that was, if that was the option that, yeah, we'd have to have lights to make it work.
Make outfielders be more.
And so I'm, I'm just got on that, having had my kids play baseball, the track, and all in the bowl, I just think it's just the density there. I think we have an opportunity, to Scott's point, there's a new Parks commissioner who actually, the Grant Bowl was improved during his tenure, Commissioner Fish. And I think there's an opportunity to sort of bundle up a whole bunch of these projects potentially, whether it's Skavon for Cleveland, and Gabriel for Lincoln, or just a lot of these projects. I think there's, Parks has the land, we have an interest in the improvements, there's some, we have joint constituencies, it makes sense. My big question about Wilshire is, PPS has a long history since the mid-'70s when Title IX came about, is whenever somebody has to move off-site, it's always the girls' programs. And having been for four years in high school, always moved off-site, and my daughter, when she was at Cleveland, always the off-site program, I would just really be concerned about, on all these projects, of who gets moved off-site and who gets to stay. Because generally, it's the boys' teams that always go stay on campus, at least in my experience.
Exactly. I don't think we should be building a boys' baseball diamond before we have a girls' softball.
On, at the school?
At the school, yeah.
Can I ask supportive information? What's the layout at Roosevelt?
It's a shared complex, so the girls are at one end and the boys are at the other end. You can't co-use the facility at the same time, and they compensated that by having lights.
So they kind of rotate that?
Yeah, so early, late, you know, you can play early, early.
Can they partially overlap practices?
Uh, no, I mean, maybe kind of infield only, but you obviously can't have softball and baseball in opposite directions, it's the same thing.
Do your lip edit better some more. Sorry.
Yeah, I agree that.
Franklin is, is the initial layout that hasn't been built out, had two separate fields.
We, one, we are trying to do the same thing there too. We just wonder if we can get it done with the bond funding before the project was completed.
So I, to finish this thought, and this is something I've learned through this process, is, this is challenging not only for the varsity teams, but for the JV freshman teams as well. And we have the kids scattered all over, getting there every which way, and that's an issue. And they're, they're packed into cars and driving around, probably not legally, and that's, that's, that's an issue. And I would love to see a sort of a comprehensive, what are we actually doing right now? And also where, you know, I don't know where, are you guys at, I think Wilson's at Gabriel? No, Wilson has.
Lincoln at Gabriel.
I think one of the Wilson teams goes to.
Wilson, Wilson. They, they have enough land, they have it right there.
So, but Lincoln's at Gabriel. Okay, but I'd love to see just a kind of a spreadsheet of.
Where, where, all the teams are for all the sports, or just?
Just, just baseball and softball. Where's varsity? Practice and play? Where's JV and crush? Practice and play? Because this is, there's a bigger issue there than this specific one that we need to look at. And again, that's part of the partnership thing. Because the other, I mean, the other moving piece, Lisa, I think is what you said, is based on soccer being more popular, that if we built on the north field and sized the soccer field there, that you would look at taking a baseball field out of Wilshire? Am I right in your mouth?
So currently, there's a full-size soccer field on the south field that we'll be, we'll be losing with the artificial turf. And there's a full-size soccer field on the north field or Hollywood Field that would disappear. So you're basically losing two side, two full-size sports fields with the option to put a softball field on the north field. I think I over-stuck your question.
Well, just use their.
Oh, it's Wilshire, yeah, so if, if a softball, if option one was taken, we would lose the use of that full-size field at the Grant Park. So the Wilshire fields, we would move all that to Wilshire, so the softball fields would be available at Wilshire. It would be put one on the north field. So put one in, lose two, and lose the full-size sports field, basically.
There's, there's two fields at Wilshire, obviously, that would be playoffs.
So that creates a double level. You were talking about that with soccer and.
Right, so we have, we have to look at the whole system with Parks. I can't just look.
And again, and I would add to that, so if you're going to take Wilshire away, and Grant has two, and sometimes two or three softball teams, and two or three baseball teams, right? Then if you're taking a property away, if we don't have lights, there's no way for them to all practice. We just start killing the program.
Well, and then you've got the Fernhill Field, which is not in very good shape.
Yeah, basically, I have a note that says Fernhill Parks Baseball Field is adequate for the lower-level teams, but it's not at, at the level of, for the upper levels.
So is that based on size or based on?
Kind of both, though. Both, yeah, both.
Could it, could it become a full-size baseball field with some?
Yes, I believe Fernhill could, could, has the size to do any improvements.
And again, I'm just exploring all of our options, just make sure.
Or, if, if you want, we could just build a whole athletic complex that go out of site, that could accommodate softball, baseball, multiple soccer fields, that could alleviate the problem. And everybody could go there, and then don't have the title line issue either.
That was my point, that every school.
Seize the moment.
I just thought I'd share that opportunity.
Yeah, when you think about other urban areas that don't have property, when you look at suburban schools and they have 50 or 100 acres, like the new Mountainside High School, I'm, they have enough land to do whatever. We don't have that here. And we have schools, various sizes of real estate, and it's hard. I don't think that it's, you know, it's not a bad idea to have something on the east side that multiple schools could use that would be maintained and in good shape, because the quality of the fields are very different too, when you go from school to school. And you've got your lower, lower-level teams, and sometimes they're doing all the traveling. You know, but we could, I think we could provide transportation. So anyway, that's, that's another, I know it's probably way too much money, but what do we do as an urban school district to accommodate the schools that don't have enough property to have athletics? And we're putting a lot of pressure on the Parks, they're great partners, they work with us, but they're also mitigating communities who want to use the Parks. And, you know, we could use them from sunup to sundown, pretty much just getting our own teams on the field, so.
I don't want us to rush into a solution that includes that long-term solution.
Right.
Which, which that, that sports complex idea, wherever in the Northeast, I mean, sort of a Delta Park South, might, might be the best long-term solution, but it takes money and time to get there. So in the meantime, what can we do that's the best interest of the kids?
Does Skavon have softball fields, or is it just based on?
Yes, Westmoreland has softball.
Which, it's great because it already has a stadium, I mean, there's, it needs turf because it's waterlogged most of the time. Just longer term, if you're looking at options, Skavon is, got lots of baseball fields, it's nice.
And?
And it has lighting? It has the potential for lighting?
That's right.
Skavon has.
And looking long-term, I think, personally, I think that Whittaker would be a terrible site to put that, because we're going to need Whittaker for a school. Madison is going to need that for a middle school.
There was a board resolution in 2012 that said they were going to get.
Yes, Mr. Bailey disagrees with me, but Mr. Bailey's.
I, I don't, I don't, I think we need to do a study.
Well, then, that, that I certainly, yes.
Okay, so I, I just want to do a time check. Yeah, so we started a little bit late, so we probably go to 3:40, but, so here's my sense after 28, 25 minutes worth of discussion. I don't think we're anywhere near making an actual decision about this. And I will fully admit personally, I'm finding it hard to visualize any of this, and I don't know, I don't know all the details. I don't know how to balance all the conflicting interests and demands and all of that. So I don't know that this forum is the best way to come up with a solution. So let me throw out a proposal. You want board direction on this?
Ultimately, yes, that's what we're.
Okay, so how about, how about a couple of board members work with the OSM team, the Cox representative, and whoever else to try to nail down some viable solution?
That can be brought back and recommended.
That can be brought back to the full board at, at some point in the, I mean, this has to be relatively imminent, right?
Yeah, so the, the timeline that, as we have now, there, each of the build-out solutions aren't necessarily going to happen, any of the build-out solutions are not going to happen at the completion of our current opening next fall in 2019. So the, so the, an interim plan is likely going to have to be in place for the first season. But that said, so it somewhat disconnects the urgency, like, you know, for tomorrow, but then we need a good full decision to be, like Scott said, to be in the long-term. But that said, we, there would be advantages of doing that now, while we've got our design and construction team engaged. So I would encourage that we don't let time go by on this, that we engage that short form of the committee soon.
Okay, and, and do we have cost estimates on, on all of these options?
We only have some conceptual ideas. We definitely need some more diligence to do that, so that would allow us a little bit more time to pull that together, so that we're ready with that information when we sit down with the, with the couple members of the board.
Does that make sense?
So I'd say in addition to a recommendation, create sort of a decision-making framework for how to provide, both the framework and the process in front of them.
I mean, I, I think you're going to have to come up with criteria. What are the criteria that, that we can all agree on that have to be met? And then out the options, and I don't know if there are any options that are listed here, but whatever options are available, which ones take off most of the criteria, the most criteria?
Yeah, and I'd really like to recommend that that selection criteria be developed hand-in-hand with whoever that, or with whoever the members of the board there work with us, so that we can develop that.
So one criteria that I think should be sort of overarching, and it's kind of Paul's point, is whether it's interim or long-term, this issue of Title IX and the test of hopefully drivers, it might be, but what I'm afraid of is, it's like, oh, we should have long-term decisions affecting something in the interim, and then the interim, the losers, or the people that have to do all the accommodating for the girls' softball team.
Well, I would, I would suggest that for any option that includes girls going somewhere else, that we build into the cost estimate with the cost of potential title line lawsuit, and then see how that balances out.
I just think we should, maybe that's one way to do it. That would certainly be effective, but I, I think too often, it's kind of like, we did the best we could, and then it's like the girls that are off-site, so I think there should be, that shouldn't just leave the default position, because it sounds like maybe there's a transition here. If there's a smaller group, work group, I'd opt for the, to run it.
Okay, who, who would like?
I was going to say, that would be extremely helpful if at least we could get the committee members that are going to help us committed to tonight, or today, so that we could start scheduling.
Okay, Juliette and Scott? Scott, I was going to ask you if there was a, what the consensus of the DAG is?
I don't think there was, well, let's see, I'm trying to think of that DAG meeting and it, I think it was. I'm trying to think of that dag meeting and it, I think it was more. One and three were more preferable than two and four, except Carol's not in there.
Yeah, I think that's why we're here, right?
This is kind of the idea, right? This is very demonstrative of how this process is done. It's, all options are extremely difficult. So, the outcome that came out of the dag was, again, no clear direction per se. There wasn't anything floated to the top that was favorable to them. In option three, the only, there was some attraction there just because it gave somewhat of an immediate solution because that was in essence no extra cost to outside the bond, we can accommodate that small change within the current budget. Obviously, that has extreme challenges administratively, trying to administrate, you know, feel our seasons that are offsetting on-site. That said, you know, there was coming into it, there was strong preference for option one, and then walking away, there was not so much of a strong preference of recognizing a lot of the challenges that have to have in our own option one. So, again, there wasn't really a clear option, clear one of these four options that came to the board. There were some conflicts.
Yes, and just as a dag member, it was really painful to find out. We cheered when there was yes up on campus, meaning exactly, and then after the dag thing ended, it was all.
And our partner is concerned about option one as well, so that.
Yeah.
There are things about option one that Park is concerned about.
It brings the most challenges for us of the options.
For sure. But I would hope that interview discussions that we really, really bad option one. And that's the testimony you've heard from playing softball game at Marshall on-site with the school. All of a sudden, tens of kids were showing up at the games, which doesn't happen quite now. And that was a huge, huge thing for the team.
Okay.
They just wanted for anything.
Okay, so how about we do this? Small committee, board members will be Juliette and Scott. What's the drug hit like? When do we need to decide?
I think I'd rather we eat in the small committee and then establish that timeframe.
Can we put a marker there that we might monitor for?
Yeah, if it works out in our calendars, I'd like to set the timeframe for the meeting with the, in the small committee in the next two to three weeks.
I'm thinking early in two or three weeks.
I'm giving it some generosity because I know everyone's schedule is tight, so if, okay.
So, okay, so I guess the charge of this committee will be come up with criteria that the existing options against the criteria. And budget is going to be one of the criteria.
Yeah, and by the way, there is what, no bond on the left for a field anywhere?
Right, so, or less than.
Any.
Yeah, okay, so you're going to figure this out. And then I would ask that you look not only at the four options that have already been identified, but stop thinking outside the softball. I mean, stop really looking at crazy ideas, will it work?
How long can we really take to demolish PPSC and?
Yeah, no, that's a different question. Okay, so, but I mean, you know, be as creative as you can because, you know, none of, it doesn't sound to me like any of these are optimal, so is there, is there something else? I mean, I have heard for years about, I don't know, there's a dog park that's a problem. It's a dog park, just saying.
And it is a problem.
Okay, but I love a dog park.
Yes. Equally passionate.
So, anyways, so I.
But let me, let me just say that a relatively small number of people in my neighborhood have really held up a lot of stuff happening in Grand Park, like the lights, like the seating.
So.
And we got to break that, I don't know, I'm hearing that there's movement, but we just have to break through that. And then again, I'm going to get a long-term and short-term on this.
Okay, so, so you guys meet, give us periodic updates, regular updates, and we'll pull it through. Can you deliver everything you need?
Yeah, we do. Our staff will be confirming that all the right people are on that.
Okay, and that was the ease work. Okay, so we'll actually move on to.
While the team gets set up here, I'll do just kind of quick overview and level settings. My topic is the Lincoln High School master plan. To kind of go back in time a little bit, the master plan process that Lincoln has gone through is the same process that all the other organization projects has gone through. And what that looks like at a $10,000 square foot level is taking things like several documents that we have here, like the adopted dead spec, the district design guidelines, and other inputs that we receive from stakeholders that are both internal and external to the district, along with things like site constraints that we have, the project budget, the project schedule, and taking all of those components and putting them into one piece of master plan document. So, that's the effort that we are working towards. What that process looks like graphically is this. This is part of your packet here, and what this is, the stakeholder engagement plan. Every one of our projects has a stakeholder engagement plan, and what this is identifies most of, not all, of the stakeholders that the team works with, receives information, coordinates with through the master planning, the design, and the construction plans of the project. So, the master plan really is a reflection of the feedback that has been received by the team that hopefully also achieves the goals of the district. So, it's not so much the team making decisions, it's really receiving feedback and trying to put that into one piece. So, that is what the master plan process is. This has been going on since, I actually looked at it since late 2015. So, it's been going on for a number of years. There've been dozens, if not hundreds, of meetings and stakeholders have been included in this process. So, that brings us to where we are today. So, today we're going to walk through where the current plan is, and then we're going to let the team talk about what are some options to actually use those that are available or that are available, and then if we want to take any feedback that is available. So.
Chris, do you want to? Yes, good afternoon, I'm Chris Lynn with Laura, our techs, and with me is?
I'm Kevin Valdez, Laura.
So, we understand our purpose today is really give you an update on the master plan, the program, the schedule, and the cost. Do you want to answer any questions that you have from your packet? Primarily, we want to clarify what the pathway is to a board decision for the project. In response to many conversations that have been happening over the past week or so, this presentation has some minor clarifications from your board packet. So, as we come to those, we'll explain what those are. Also, in your board packet, there's an executive summary that goes into probably some great detail. I want to hit the highlights of those as kind of an opening for our presentation. We established through a due diligence study a number of years ago that full replacement is the most cost-effective way to get the new end spec program, anti-metre standards. We studied numerous modernization and addition options, and they proved to be between 11.9 and $40.9 million more expensive than full replacement. So, I know that was a question somebody had, hopefully that clears things up.
I'm going to violate my own rule and interrupt you for a second.
Thanks, too.
Given the cost escalation that's been going on.
Yes.
Does that difference still hold?
Yes, absolutely. That escalation relates to construction materials, labor, applies to whether you're modernizing and adding. In some cases, the one case where you have to move Lincoln students off-site to Marshall or some other site actually delays the project by a whole other year from the current. So, escalation applied even more so for that.
Because Marshall will be occupied?
Yes. We have a number of distinct challenges on this site, jurisdictional with the central city plan going to the design review and the design commission. We have a number of utility challenges on this site, two big easements that are not on this site that we can't build on. The site's really small and constrained, so size is an issue. And there's a lot of topography, so 40 feet between one side and the other, which are really challenging for us. Just like every other school that's come before you, there have been some program adjustments that every school has suggested better meet the needs on that site. And Lincoln's no different, and we've actually reviewed those numerous times, our steering committee, the dag, and staff. So, we'll summarize what those are. Our cost estimate is based on meeting the design standards that PPS has published for programming and technical standards and what type of roof and all the good stuff that really represents the basis for all the projects that you need. So, we're meeting those and I'm seeding those in any way, and that's the basis for our design. In terms of the schedule, the scheduled opening in the fall of 2022 is still achievable. But in order to achieve that, we need a decision and direction from the board by August 28. If there's substantial changes from the master plan. If there's substantial changes to the program, that will impact the statement, it will have to be assessed once we know what those might be. At this time, you're fully aware that the master plan and budget are not in alignment. We have several cost reduction options that we can talk about today, get your direction on. But we do know that, and we've heard you, that you desire equity and parity between facilities at the high school level. In spite of that, the steering committee took a hard look at two pretty big program reductions, one at 10%, one at 17%, and they didn't recommend moving forward with either one of those because we've heard you express your concern about having facilities for any of the high schools. So, this is where we are now. We have our new building on the west side of the site. That will be constructed while students are still in session on the east side of the site. When construction's complete, they move over, that building gets taken down, and track and file that building. This is Salmon, 18th, this is 14th, and the freeway. Our front door is located right here on 17th and Salmon. The tall portion of the building, which has classrooms, offices, and all the columns within the building that line up in small spaces, they're all stacked on top of each other. And the big spaces like the gym and the theater and the commons that are long-standing spaces that don't want things stacked on top of them, don't have to be stacked on top of them. This is just a very practical diagram to achieve a structural simplicity, clear organization, and to achieve some cost-effective construction techniques. There's a track and field. We have practiced proposing like a one-third size practice field in turf in this location here. Our grandstands that cover some staff parking below, a small support building for tickets and concessions, and potentially some restrooms, and a student plaza and loading off of this side right here. There are two major utility easements that are on the site, one on 17th, one on 16th. Those are between the six-foot-to-hand and the pipe specialty container creek that run all the way down to the Atlantic River. So, those are effectively for us no builds, we can't move to them, or we really want to. There's still in negotiation, there's some discussions with PBOB, that's the Bureau of Transportation, about pedestrian access in the site on 17th. Lots of ongoing conversations with the neighbors and the PBOB about what that looks like and how security on the site can be as well, allowing access to neighbors who walk through the site. One of our guiding principles has been to achieve universal design strategies.
Can I correct you one second?
Yes.
How do we know what is the revised packet? You have a revised packet today that says that we're supposed to be great?
We don't have a revised packet, we have a slideshow.
Okay, all right, so this is the same.
Yeah.
But if there's something in the packet you want to refer to, but you're not seeing on here, we have that slide deck as well, we can read something else. So, it's really, we try to edit down the information to be a little bit more clear.
So, the site will be designed for access wherever possible. We're going to have gentle sloping water, we're going to integrate the landscape. We'll have steps up to the front door. Everything's going to be accessible, welcoming. Special ed is going to be located, we believe, on the ground floor, not the front entry. But that's one revision that we've made. The challenge there would be is that the central city guidelines may or may not consider that to be active use, which is a requirement for salmon. And so, we're going to have to do our best to convince the design commission that this is the right thing to do. Their concern is really that, but life of the sidewalk, not so much what's inside the building. So, to be continued.
Yeah, I think there is. Yeah, and I think there are some design strategies that we can employ that hopefully satisfy a design commission and also allow us to have the space that we need there.
This is the first time the commission's been informed with a question like this. As for you, it's also the first time you're going to the design commission. And while the things like life skills and those sort of higher-knee spaces will be on the ground floor, the learning resource classrooms will be distributed throughout the building, so we're not creating, you know, a standalone sort of self-contained space area. We'll have ample elevators to all levels, and we're going to have accessible and gender-reclusive restrooms throughout the building on every floor, and that carries over to things like showers and restroom rooms and other spaces. So, this is a slightly different version than what's in your packet. And you can see we've located the life skills rooms here close to the front door, right next to admin.
Yeah, and the bus drop-off is going to be based in the front, so that will be negotiated. Also, we should note that the prior slide about universal design is not included in your packet, so we'll set things.
Right, as Becca says, we're hoping to get some of this turnout space dedicated to special level bus drop-off at the appropriate times. Just to walk you around the plan, clockwise, our entry, our commons, the building has a courtyard to bring light into the center. Things like food service and building support back up to the loading dock for easy access. We're looking at performing arts and teen parent and health clinic spaces along 18th. And the city is requiring us to put a special aspect of the program on the corner to activate the screen clock on the corner. We're thinking that is potentially something like a plot, something that you can look into and see a lot of activity and life if we live on that corner. Up on the second floor, we're looking at a combination of admin and counseling stacked over the first-floor counseling. Upper-level commons, our gymnasium primarily lives on the second floor, as does the mezzanine balcony to the theater. So, we have theater with a balcony as opposed to a one-level theater because we have such little site area we need to stack the seating up on top of each other. And then more instructional space.
Would you mind, as you go through the slides, when there's changes from the packet that we got just on last Thursday that you could call them out?
Yep. So, one change here on the third floor is there's some additional information about. So one change here on the third floor is there's some additional information about the auxiliary gym, which overlooks the main gym. And our master plan proposes a running track at the auxiliary gym level. And the reason we're proposing that is an auxiliary gym requires three means of deep rest from it, or building code. And we've got one over here and one over here, and we've got a stair over here that we need to get to. So essentially, to meet building need, rest requirements, we have to build half of the running track. So it seems to us like an opportunity to say, well, it would be, we'd be remiss to not even suggest that. However, it's a nice-to-have, it's not a need-to-have at this point. A need-to-have is the deep rest platform.
And that could be admin later date?
The other half of the run track could be an alternate, could be flat, kind of added at a later date.
You mean, after the building's complete?
Yeah.
Yes, but definitely at a higher cost than doing it during construction.
Yep.
Probably double. Yep.
This is our typical academic floor, floors four through seven, which have a fairly repetitive organization of instructional spaces facing north and south. A core with stairs and bathrooms in the middle, flex spaces on the end, and prominent stairs on the outside corners to really encourage, you know, use by students. They can be seen, they can be used out, and people can see them going up and down between classes. It's a great exercise program, this building. We've visited several schools on the east coast that are eight, nine, ten, twelve stories. Fairly common, East and Mississippi have these schools. My mom went to Stuyvesant High School, it was a twenty-one stories high school, really tall. So it's quite common, not common yet. Yet, yes. There is a request on the table, we believe it's from the community, but there may be some requests from the teaching and learning side as well. For an additional space, it's not in the Edspec, that's a construction CTE component, a shop, a shop space. So that's not currently in the estimate. If it was decided that that was a piece that wanted to be added on top of the Edspec, we believe would go back in this zone right here on the ground floor, or it's near the loading dock. But it went displaced that piece of program, probably down into a basement. So we do have to make the building bigger to accommodate the addition of the shop.
Isn't the Edspec rules that you get a certain amount of CTE space? And if you go beyond it, you're taking some of your other space versus just adding?
Yes, I believe those are the rules of the Edspec. And I think that particular question hasn't been posed yet to the steering committee in terms of, what are you willing to give up?
And also, Lincoln's CTE space is also just classroom space. But that was a part of the DAG, is what you're making?
This is a fairly late-breaking development. My understanding is that at the instructional level, there is interest in adding another CTE track to Lincoln for construction. And so if we just haven't had time to really process that and figure it out, if in fact it's wanted, then there's a trade-off right now.
I mean, this rebounds back to the, we have no plan, we have no... We ought to be making sure that every high school that has CTE there has something for hands-on kids, something for entrepreneurial kids, something for kids who want to go into helping professions. There are six basic interest areas. So, I mean, I can share this, I've got some copies. This is an updated CTE matrix that you've probably seen, a couple versions of. This is the most recent one that I've received. And it does show to add construction CTE to Lincoln as an added program directed by the district.
Yes, and I apologize if this is maybe late and I flew, but I would love some opportunities to talk about CTE space and potentially some storefronts. So some cutting edge around the country is happening right now is retail space partnerships with retail for students to have experiences. For example, Nike or I know Gap does a partnership in Nashville with a high school. Maybe a restaurant front with a culinary program, with kids being able to actually have some restaurant space.
We're talking with them. Yep.
A credit union, right, banking for the financial piece.
Thank you.
Some opportunity for some interaction.
Can we have our principal talk about the current?
Absolutely. Thank you. I just want to clarify that we are offering hands-on opportunities. So we started with business and then culinary arts. And the culinary art classroom is actually in the nutrition services kitchen. It has been up and running for four years. But we also just took another classroom and turned that into a product design. And they have welding materials, so they will be building things. And that's as, you know, much as we can do is to take a classroom right now. We are advocating for other maker spaces. Our robotics program is really going strong, and they're building things with their hands. But they're also using technology. I would say that the very large, big box extensive things should not be at every school because they're not affordable. They should be at a designated school, and students should go to access them. But the other things that are able to be in maker spaces in comprehensive high schools, not, you know, should be, and that's what we're advocating to expand this.
So I guess I'll just go back to my original question. So the way that the Edspec setup is, so granted, there wasn't an, I couldn't assure you here. There wasn't a district overlay on CTE of like, here's the point of view of the types that each school has to have. And so that just got built, and Lincoln chose whatever they chose. But then if something gets swapped out, that something's going to be added, something else is going to go versus it being additive. And that's my understanding of how the Edspecs work. So if the other schools are adding CTE spaces, then they can find like X amount of square feet or the pick that the district says pick from these different pockets.
It's maybe good to get clarification on that because the Edspec square footage is presented as a range. And so there's flexibility to build equipment. And a part of our method to control costs, we maintain the base minimum. Putting aside budget constraints, which we never should. I mean, if you're planning up front, then there's a certain amount of flexibility and not necessarily a trade-off. But we're in a very constrained budget right now, so yeah, we need to pay attention to that.
So I'm totally with you, Scott, about hands-on, and so there's different kinds of hands-on. Well, we are in a constrained environment, so I guess, I keep going back to sort of the equity with all the schools. So whether, you know, the schools of Franklin, and you know, it's not even getting to Roosevelt, they're not having added their additional space. But I think we have to do it within the context of what's of the budget. And then, you know, ideally what that mix is, and you're just right in time to help influence the discussion and going forward. But it seems like to make it additive, it's more of a budget pressures.
But to me, the equity lens would be on the program itself and not on the facilities. And so if you look at the program and you say, we know that we want to be able to accommodate this construction program, which does require a slightly different dedicated space, then maybe you're pulling something back from the business program or some of these other CTE classes that just utilize ordinary classroom space. It should be, the program should drive the question.
Right, and I think that that's along that line. If we want to make the business program really robust, maybe it looks like building out the business program into like a hands-on credit union storefront or retail storefront, something along those lines with the retail. Or instead of adding or taking away from the existing program to add a construction of those spaces. And just looking at how to enhance the programming that's on the campus.
Yeah, and nearby, because we looked at nearby storefronts, pop-up spaces. But the city has been the primary barrier in terms of not zoned for educational use. And so as we continue to collaborate with the city as our primary partner, that's a place that we really need to talk about the zoning and the ideas.
Can we ask who generated the request for construction space?
So it comes from the school site?
And from the overall scheme?
And district staff as well, it's kind of both from district CTE staff and from the school site. I'm going to join effort, which is why it's showing up. You know, this is a district document, not a school document. So it's showing up in this white blue bubble here to add.
But we also, kind of late-breaking, right? So is this a question of?
This was a request for equity in the types of programming. Is my understanding that stemmed from some conversations at a campus? I don't think that this was a district saying this has to be added to the campus.
I think it evolved really from talking about the industry and local industry needs. And when you see the cost escalating hundreds of millions of dollars because there's not enough labor and construction, project managers and construction management. It was a natural conversation that emerged. And then also with equity, you know, where are we putting our construction and trades? Because if we're only putting them in one part of town, we think kids are from low-income areas or other historically underserved. And we're not putting them on, you know, in neighborhoods where that's not the perception. You know, are we creating tracks based on neighborhoods? So this is part of our equity conversations, part about what the industry needs right now in Portland, and then linking it to business management as well, which we already have, and construction management, project management. It's also a great opportunity to use our partners who will be on-site building to host interns and other things.
By the way, a recent state study seemed to indicate that the increase in construction costs weren't exactly flowing into higher wages for construction workers.
And then we don't want them just in one part of town.
Chris, a couple of quick questions here. Appreciate the note. What is the blue space that's just above that, the unlabeled blue space?
In this drawing, this blue, this is dressing rooms and tangible storage.
Ah, okay.
And it's supposed to be stage side of the theater.
Okay, and where is the access for the theater?
The theater would be actually entered off of the commons.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And you said that this was a construction tech space, you need to do a basement?
So yes, what's underneath that red bubble there is a word called support. So that's the building storage, it's a building central plant elements. If we did not have construction CTE space that we had to put in, that's what would be there. But since we're thinking about adding this potentially, and this is where it wants to go, we force some of those things down into this.
So what's the cost increment on this?
I've got that actually later on in the presentation.
We have some basement space already, so it'll just be the basement.
Bigger basement. So.
I'm confused about the process, so we're still talking about adds to the, to the, they're going through the address.
I think clearly there's three things you could tell us. You could tell us, let's not do this basically. Or you could tell us, let's do it, but trade off something else in the program. Or you could tell us, let's do it and let's add to the program. Seems like those are the range of things that we need here from you. It's not my decision to build what kind of program we're going to build. Go with your guidance line. The next slide, in your packet, there's a site plan that really doesn't apply anymore. So let's skip over that. And we're going to go, this is a graphic schedule, and then there's kind of a key milestone case. Some new information on it. So we've highlighted the current phase, we're in schematic design right now. We're still on track to start construction in spring of 2020 and move into the building in 2022, with a track following a year after that. Everyone's had a busy summer, and it's been hard to get everybody's focus on this. But we've been requesting since June to start to have these conversations with you. And as we talked about earlier, you know, the end of August is going to be the time that we need a decision that impacted the schedule too greatly. And I think it's a good reminder that in this sort of environment of high escalation, that every month we wait, it rose to construction budget by seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And you guys are not alone. We work at a lot of districts. We have the same meeting at every district, so.
You've got good company.
Yes.
But they're not near or not?
They're not near or not, no.
Not yet.
So the next slide, next piece in your packet is a program summary by department area, which I think is kind of a lot of excruciating detail. So we went back off and we came up with a higher level summary. And Eric, you wanted to actually talk about something here.
Yeah, I just, I think there's been a little confusion on sort of the direction that we have as far as how we implement the Edspecs on projects and the intent behind them. There's a statement there, but it's just taken directly from the Edspecs. I just wanted to read this one paragraph real quick because I think it helps capture really the intent and the behind what we do. And this is about the area program as far as the square footage area program of a comprehensive high school. It says, "While the area program identifies the number and size of required spaces, these numbers will and should be adapted to meet site-specific building and site constraints as well as program needs. The area program is meant to provide district-wide guidance to design teams for the delivery of high school curriculum and should be seen as a point of departure for design teams working on modernization or replacement of comprehensive high schools. It is expected that room sizes, adjacencies, and layout will vary depending on the constraints of existing buildings." So there's some talk about the existing buildings, but then also just how we work to develop the local program at each site based on this direction.
So we're proposing a series of adjustments to the Edspec program. We worked really closely with DAG and with the steering committee and with the staff on-site to get all the information. We've got a point where those groups are feeling fairly positive about the adjustments we're proposing. We set a rule.
I'm sorry, excuse me, this slide is not in our.
This is a new.
This is a new slide.
It's an elaborating version of the slide that you have.
Which page?
Twenty-seven.
So it'd be great to have the first slide.
Yes. To your point before about trade-offs in the program and, you know, one really effective way to control a project's cost is to limit how big it is. So we set some ground rules pretty early on that wherever the program needed more space, our goal was to find it from somewhere else. So there's a series of trade-offs here that basically net out into new additional space above and beyond the Edspec to a large degree. And that's been our approach throughout the project, is to try and offset anything that was asked for when something happened and we can just downsize.
Well, to clarify, when you say meeting the Edspec, the Edspec minimum requirements, so there are the preferred spaces and optional spaces that we have included for that.
Right, so the Edspec is actually a range, it's not a single number. And the minimum is two hundred and eighty-one thousand square feet and change. And then there's options that go all the way up to three hundred and thirty-seven thousand and change. So what we're proposing for Lincoln is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand and some change. Really quite close to the minimum with a couple of other small pieces.
And we explained at the last quarter meeting that even though those two numbers don't quite align, although our net area is extraordinarily close to the minimum requirement net area, we have the added burden of the high-rise or a tall building with the four elements that feed the bathrooms, the elevators and so on, that maybe it's difficult to get to have that same close coordination.
Hi, I'm sorry. So on that last slide, what are you netting?
Two hundred and six thousand eight hundred.
You mean what it uses or what?
Oh, okay, no.
The bottom line versus the scrap.
The number that's there is two oh sixty. The number that's in there is two oh six two hundred. The EdSpec minimum is two oh six six ninety.
It's on page, it's on page twenty-six.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, places where we potentially could have net reductions, like the computer labs, I think back when we were talking about EdSpecs and people said like computer labs are kind of the old style thing, then instead of taking that as actually we might get some cost savings in the project, that space has now been used some other ways, that might be in that.
We have some specialized computer labs rather than general computer labs.
Right, I'm looking at page thirty-two, there's a computer lab. And like one of the things, I know the early conversations about where are we going to get some cost savings, it was like, well, we don't need computer labs that we used to have. But just to be clear, like on page twenty-eight, when it's one less computer lab, instead of taking that as a savings, we've now utilized it for something else.
Well, that's something else.
Just understand.
That's correct. That's correct. And those things that are something else, there's really compelling reasons why they're on the list.
Some of those reasons are to meet the EdSpec that wasn't currently being met in some other area.
Well, a lot of it is to serve programs that exist now, that really don't have a home. So for, take a computer lab, for example, we have, I think, a thousand square feet of additional CTE space. We've also offset that by taking out the computer lab. And so that thousand square feet is needed to serve culinary arts, product design, and business courses that exist now. So if we were not to make that adjustment, I think the question back to you guys would be which CTE program do you want us to take out of the curriculum? That's the kind of, that's really the offset. Trying to balance the curriculum needs at Lincoln as they exist right now in order to be in the future with potential savings in those spaces. So they were, as they were discussing, these are sort of true fundamental needs that the program has. Does that make sense?
Can we, can we go on with that?
Okay. So I probably want to rate, we're just doing these pretty quickly because there's an excruciating amount of detail. If you've read it and have questions, we'll happen to come back to it. But what we've done is basically on a room-by-room basis, we've highlighted the things that have gotten a little bit bigger. And so it's things like adding a new classroom and putting in an additional science lab, going from eleven to twelve science labs would be really the need at Lincoln, probably closer to thirteen science labs. But again, we're trying to. Can you do this cautious and conservative as we can in terms of adding these things? You know, some project rooms, et cetera. I don't want to sort of read through each one unless you want to come back and talk about one in specific. So there's the changes to visual arts, to the band orchestra and choir, some minor changes to the theater. There's. There is a compelling need for a wrestling room that's in addition to the movement room. We do other schools are combining those into one space. We think that the use pattern at Lincoln is pretty intense for both of those, so we're not quite sure, after looking at the schedule, that they can coexist very easily in the same space, but.
But Madison's doing that.
Yeah.
So it would be helpful, I mean, I don't know if you're going to do this later on, it would be really helpful to have what you're saying about Lincoln in comparison to what's happening in other schools. Because we're building these schools for a hundred years from now.
Yeah.
And the fact that something's happening today doesn't necessarily mean that fifty years from now, it's, you know, yoga might not be a thing fifty years from now.
Sure. Yeah.
It'll probably be a thing.
It's been around for a while, so far.
Yeah.
Yoga will not be a thing fifty years from now.
So again, just kind of going through these quickly and we didn't connect anything we wanted to talk about in particular. These are some of the adjustments we made downwards, so making the classrooms a little bit smaller, making labs a little bit smaller, you know, looking at more efficient options for teacher planning areas, taking a reduced option for the media center, which is actually permitted in the EdSpec for a new building, is that smaller media center. I think what we intend to show with these next two diagrams is, here's a pie chart or a doughnut chart, I guess, in this case, and it shows by department the relative area within the building dedicated to which one. And so, you know, the specifics aren't that important. I think what's important is the comparison between, those are the departments as they're described in the EdSpec, and then these are the departments that we adjusted. And so there's like, you know, we'll look around, maybe there's a one or two percent change between departments, but by and large, what we're proposing is still homely, is really close to the EdSpec. And while there's a long list of really important adjustments, they're relatively minor in the big picture of the program. So this is a new piece, that's not the type we can forward to you guys, or forward the whole piece of information.
It's remarkable that the proportions aren't in fact so close.
There's a.
I appreciate listing out the program increases and decreases this way. It just makes it really explicit.
Thanks. Here's another new slide, although you've seen a version of this in the past. This is all the high schools that are modernized or about to be modernized, and this is the square footage proposed for each one. So you can see Benson at three sixty-eight, Madison at two ninety-eight, Grant at two ninety-three, Lincoln at two eighty-nine, and Franklin, Franklin between two. And then Roosevelt is actually designed for a smaller EdSpec, for only thirteen hundred and fifty students, as opposed to seventeen hundred students as the others. So that's why that has a bit smaller. But you see, even with our adjustments and trying to really make this program fit the program at Lincoln, we're kind of in the middle of the pack in terms of size. So that's been part of that effort of trade-offs in the program. Okay, so this one's in your packet. This is the capacity diagram from the EdSpec. And in general, it describes, you know, various levels of generalization and the capacity that flows from that. So, you know, in general, if you use every classroom all the time and put as many kids into it as you could, you know, EdSpec says you can get twenty-one hundred plus students in a high school. So Lincoln really, as we've done the capacity analysis for Lincoln, we're still netting seventeen hundred to maybe twenty-one fifty, twenty-two hundred if you cram everybody in. So capacity is a hair higher, but in general, it's the same capacity as the other high schools. Does that make sense? Okay.
So Madison's going to have potential, could potentially have capacity at a thousand students?
We're not working on Madison, I'm not the details of Madison, but if it follows the EdSpec, it should happen.
Oh, the Madison capacity, so what's shown there in the packet is this is straight out of the EdSpec. So when we say seventeen hundred, well, there's no math number that comes out to exactly seventeen hundred, it just hits this range. So this is the definition of seventeen hundred. So Lincoln is really wanting to be, are we right there, like within that range or are we far off? Math is out, are the specific numbers, but it's the same thing, it's really close to this. So we want to make sure that when there's a range in here, we're right within the business that that points us, we're at capacity seventy-five.
Moving to costs, this is our latest cost estimate of the master plan, which is still a conceptual estimate, it's done by Architectural Cost Consulting here in Portland. And again, a lot of detail, the number you care about is the one here at the bottom, a hundred and eighty-two million and change. So those are the hard costs of the building and the site. This includes a couple of things that are a unique challenge on Architectural Property. So included within this hundred and eighty-two million is about four and a half million dollars of city requirements for design review, and there's another, almost ten million, eleven million dollars in geotechnical issues, pilings and soft soils and mitigation of those things.
Do you remember what those two items were executed at originally?
So originally, conveniently, the city adopted brand-new guidelines during our master plan phase. And so there were a number of things that were not anticipated that were added to their design guidelines. For example, the requirement for reuse on all buildings and the downtown, so it's not something that anyone really anticipated, but it's something that's been implemented.
At the previous board meeting, we provided the board with a kind of a historical tracking from our January 2017 estimate, pre-bond up until today, which showed some of those jurisdictional changes that increased our costs.
So one question I have is in terms of just being able to understand this whole issue of the cost estimation and what Eric demanded about this last one, is to have on one sheet, this sheet, but there's a column that has the estimates here, but to do the estimates from pre-referral, referral February, and the issue first, it was ninety-nine dollar column, and then now we have a five column. So you can see over time, and so I think that way the community can see which of the categories have changed materially, but then this issue of the cost estimation and how do they go from there, then you have it really all laid out and then you can give that maybe just not like.
Yeah, we could do the, we do have another document after we're done with Lincoln that does it globally at a higher level, but we can do it at this level as well, or at a regular level. I'd definitely do that.
Also does it have a cost per square foot basis?
I'm going to do about percent level.
Just that way, there may be like, of all these line items, you know, five that have changed, or maybe they've all changed, and then you can see how they've changed over time and how much, and I think it will be useful to answer any questions like, how did this happen? And maybe what seems unreasonable at a gross level may seem at a micro level that means more rationality.
Is that doable?
That is doable, to produce that, we can do, so this is what we call, these are the C, the construction specification, the construction division, so we can go by project by division.
So how long would that take? That's a good question. I mean, okay, so just to inject a little urgency here, so if we miss the August twenty-eighth deadline, we're looking at adding another year, right? And another year of construction would be how much?
Ten million.
Ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars. Okay, so whatever, whatever changes we're going to ask for, whatever work we're going to ask for, it's got to, it's got to net out at less than ten million dollars. Because otherwise, all we're doing is delaying and we're not saving out.
Well, this is past data, so it's, it's just providing, I think, visibility to the community about what's happened over time, so that understanding what categories.
Okay, my question is, can you do that in the next two weeks?
We can do it for the next two weeks for Lincoln. My only hesitation is we have different professional cost estimators, because sometimes they do their estimates in different formats. So that's my only hesitation, is going back and looking at these formats and say, oh, now it's going to take time to make it apples to apples.
Isn't this the work that Maria presented about, the DAC, that she was doing for each of the projects on the labor material?
Correct, yes, but it's not the same level of progression of going back by project and showing a progression over time. So she has, she's pulled out information that ranges by CSI divisions for Grant and Roosevelt and Franklin at a point in time, not a progression over time.
Because the thing about the progression over time is that, and she addressed this when she was talking to the DAC, is that the escalation is not the same in each category. And that's part of what they're trying to dig into, right? Like some, some types of materials you're seeing, you know, thirty percent more than they were last year, and others it's more gradual. So that, that's kind of useful. Well, I just think we're a hundred and eighty million dollars over, we're going to have to show people like what happened, and my viewpoint seems completely relevant. And the community, I think a lot of it are going to say, yeah, that makes sense, but if it's not, it's only on one document where you can actually see the progression, and it's. Part of it's the question of what happened, I think, is then never going to be answered.
You can do something like that. Also, the size and the shape of the buildings have changed over time, so looking back two years, we can give you costs, but it's, it could be meaningless data. Like we can do it, but it might not be like a smoking gun of what you're hoping for.
I'm not looking for a smoking gun, I'm, because I don't think there's a person that made a cost estimating mistake. Especially this is like informing the process going forward, but if we don't understand how these things even evolve over time, you know, how are we going to fix it next time? So, you know, footnote if there's a building change, but I mean, otherwise it's like, well, we don't know, and we're going to go ahead. That doesn't seem to inform.
The answer is yes, we can produce the data and may have some caveats to it. And it's not going to be, no matter what, it's not going to be total apples to apples, there's going to be some things in there. We just need to do a good job of looking.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, because the information we presented to the board in the last meeting, you know, we have the base scope of the building, and then there was the additional scope based on, you know, geotechnical investigations based on the new code changes and things like that. So just having the summaries of the estimates, we do need to have a lot of footnotes because it isn't exactly apples to apples. You can't just look at the melas category and see it ticking up. It's like, it also relates to the pilings that are different and things like that.
Can I, I just want to do a time check, please. Twenty-five of five. We have twenty-five minutes to wrap this up. What do we need to do by five P M. in order to keep this going?
Oh, here, I'll take a shot at that. So what the information here is, the master plan as it's been the input that this team had received, working with all the different stakeholders, this is what the proposal is. If there is direction or discussion to go a different way than this, and that's why we pulled out so much detail, is the consideration that there might be specific directions, do not construct that scope or do add that scope in. What we need is clear direction. Is this the right plan? Is it not? Is there something that the board specifically wants different or wants us to investigate and bring back? Because as of the multi-year effort has brought it to this point in time, with all the feedback of yours. Is there any?
Go on.
Yep.
All right. So in your packet, there's this summary of costs. You can see the hard costs of the building as related to the estimate. On top of that, we need to add one and a half percent green energy technology, which is in the state of Oregon department. We also believe that there's up to, potentially another two million dollars of saving part of the right-of-way work. It's undefined at this point. It will be defined soon, and usually when it gets defined, it gets expensive. So we're being cautious and ensuring some money for what we think might be coming down the road.
So do we keep running down here?
Yeah.
City regs are adding six and a half million to this, roughly?
That's a good round number.
Just two million dollars per month.
Yeah.
Two million in perfect case?
Yeah.
For, for this, for this Lincoln. Because Grant was a million.
Okay, so.
Plus having to rent the space for the construction trailers.
You can see the soft costs are pretty much in line with the other projects in terms of the percentages, cost for furniture. We are reserving some money for some temporary swing facilities, probably athletic fields at a site that we're determined. There's a ten percent contingency on top of that, and that's, that's how we get to the two hundred and forty-two million and change. There are four things that are not included in this price. The facilities groups would love an elevator stop because of a tall roof. We haven't included that yet. If we're directed to include that, that's an additional hundred and thirty-one thousand. There's the potential to use the water retainer creek to cool the building as a way to save energy. So there's an initial cost to that of around three hundred grand to pay for itself over time.
Do you know how long?
We have not done the detailed analysis on that yet.
Okay, I think by the twenty-eighth, we're going to meet.
Yeah, we have meetings set with the city, I believe it's this week, for them to even tell us that it's. In the middle of our master planning process, the district issued some new guidelines around theater design. So the theater that's included in this design has what we call a tension grid and a shorter stage. We do theaters like this in lots of high schools. The aspect that just came out for theaters has a taller stage. And so if we were to implement a taller stage, that would add one and a half million dollars to the project.
That's the full flight tower.
Full flight tower, right. And then the additional programs, this is the construction CTE primarily, is an additional three to four million dollars. And then there's, there's still this strong community interest for a bigger dedicated wrestling room. We've sort of tried to hold that conversation at bay. The wrestlers, they'll be here probably on the 28th to speak their mind. But somewhere in the three to four million dollars for the CTE and for the bigger wrestling room.
We heard about the flight tower previously, we didn't hear about the orchestra pit.
So the orchestra, this is a change, is that the orchestra pit is in our estimate. It was a typo in the plan. So this price includes orchestra pit.
Yeah, we have to.
So just to be clear, the new district issued aspects, those are like staff level decisions that got made that are additive beyond what Franklin and.
No, they reflect what was built at Franklin and what was built at.
Part of the lessons learned.
Lincoln will be the only one without a flight tower, I think.
Off-line in, this is, I'm just writing a paragraph to say about that, that actually means for olive, or for drumming.
Clear as a bell.
Yeah, just real, two sentences, whatever it takes.
Yeah, it's the ability to lift the rear up above the ceiling. Question?
So does the two forty-two compare with the hundred and ninety?
Basically two hundred.
I believe one eighty-seven was the published budget.
So, okay, so you detailed some clear differences. Is it gonna be more expensive, basically, per square foot and a half a second? Because, for example, the city stuff, the soil excavation kind of stuff, there's also a factor around the urban construction space. Anything else you can tell the story of why it's three hundred million more than Madison or comfortable construction? Some of it is the two-year timing.
Because the timing is a big part of the initial escalation.
But just, just that would be helpful as well.
Okay.
Well, I think, you know, that's my greatest concern, to be honest, just delaying longer. I mean, we started, I think, in 2015 to be ready for the November bond, and we were ready to go in May for summer work and told you summer work, and that would have been 2017 summer. And now it's 2018, the costs have only escalated. And a year ago, we were at a meeting when Jared Vincent came and said, well, it'd actually be good to hold off, because then we won't be competing against ourselves and the costs will go down. And it hasn't been true. The costs have just escalated and escalated since 2015 preparation. So I'm just, I'm really worried about that.
There's, I think, date bonds on the ballot around this date.
Yeah.
Right, so as soon as November passed and then everyone else got to work, so.
But on the flip side, maybe the tariffs will end up putting us into a world recession like that.
I'll tweet it right now.
A lot of those jokes are funny.
So some additional information I have for you guys. We know the cost is a challenge, but we implemented a number of things during the design phase, which in our opinion, it tries to keep this thing as tight as it can. The only member maybe an early version that was nine stories tall, we've actually made the building shorter and a little bit wider. It's actually easier to move through, but also saves, saves money. We've described some of the things we've managed the programming process to try not to do adds unless there are things that offset it. There are a number of requests from really strong community groups about tennis and covered grandstands, et cetera, that we've pushed back on and not implemented. We pushed back on two city requirements that saved millions of dollars. One was initially the city guidelines did not allow any parking above grade, and they were asking us to build a parking garage in the ground at the cost of, I don't know how many millions of dollars. The district got involved in that and through advocacy, the city council got an exception for this site. That saves quite a bit of money. And we also got an exception from what are called the super block requirements, which has a number of site design, site-specific elements, plazas and street furniture, things like that, that we pushed back on, which also will save some money. We talked a little bit about the theater design that's currently in the master plan, and then after our initial look at the site, we've actually raised the level of the track up several feet to minimize the amount of extra dirt we're taking off the site and to minimize the height of walls. So we'll continue to kind of fine tune that as we move forward. So in terms of options for reducing costs, we've bundled them into three packets. A is the current national plan, that's what a big building is and that's the cost.
I just have a quick question about, so this is about halfway through schematic design, right? So can you just say something about these cost estimates relative to where things are gonna be when we get a contractor onboard and start to actually, you know, negotiate the guaranteed maximum price and all of that? Like, how, how comfortable can you be at fifty percent schematic design with cost estimates, which is a different world than back in, you know, master planning, conceptual design?
I guess you're asking how accurate is the estimate, how confident are we in it?
I know.
And, you know, given today's volatility, we are carrying some extra contingencies to address that. So in addition to the ten percent project contingency, schematic design, we carry an additional ten percent design contingency. Dan and Eric are also carrying an additional five percent on top of that for market volatility. And so I think a level of contingency is indicative of how confident really anybody is.
So where are those numbers?
If you look, if you look back, there's a reason we're intentional about some of the level of detail that we provide. So on pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine, you'll see the information about the cost estimates. And what we want to show there is, no one of course has the crystal ball, you know, exactly what the future is gonna hold, but what this does is outline what the thinking is, how we got to that number. So we're at two hundred and forty-two million dollars. You can see, here's the number from professional cost estimate, the one eighty-four million dollars. And you can see in that bottom section, there are some of the contingencies that are included in the hard cost estimate. So design contingency, a CMGC contingency, has market volatility contingency. What we want to do is be really transparent and clear on, these are all different ways of managing risks. And so we're showing you what we think is the appropriate way to manage risk. That said, you know, different professionals could vary on that. But this is what we think is appropriate based on the information we have. On the next page, where you see the soft costs and there's other information, and where it says contingency, that's the project contingency. That's where additional risk management is being held. So outside the hard costs and contingencies that will likely be consumed during design or as a part of the contractor's contract, the project has additional funds that can be put forward, whatever adds that may come about. So that's how we're managing risk. We're just trying to be real clear and transparent about it, because in the future, if something is different or something is dramatically different, we won't be able to point back and say, well, this is what we assumed at the time, and at that time, it was reasonable, maybe something I expect to change at any moment.
So with these cost estimates, what's the square foot cost that we use, the street square foot cost that people use? It's not based off of the two forty-two, it's based on?
Typically, when you hear dollars per square foot, it's based on a building cost, just the building, not the site.
So the one eighty-two.
Which also includes site costs, so typically, you don't include site costs. And that said, people do everything. People are all over the place.
How, what number, what are we using? So we can compare the.
So the building is coming in at five hundred dollars a square foot.
Five hundred?
Just the building, it does not include the site.
And what did Franklin comment? So tell me what the equation is for five hundred. Which, which number it is divided by two eighty-nine? I can tell you.
It's this number right here. So it's.
I can't see that.
Sorry.
Bottom of page thirty-eight. One hundred and forty-six point six million.
So that's, and then, so you take that number divided by two eighty-nine, and you get five hundred square foot?
Yeah.
So tell me, this is Dan's probably a question, what would the Franklin cost be? What was the one eighty-six number for Franklin?
Yeah, it's gonna be lower, because it's gonna be, I guess right around a hundred million divided by two ninety, two ninety, two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two, so we've got two eighty-two to five hundred.
And two hundred and eighty-two.
No, sorry, two hundred and eighty-two thousand square foot.
So I don't, I'm not vouching the contingency of this, but this is information that was.
I can see how far you're going with that.
I put my glasses on and the microphone. But this is what was put forward at the time, was that Franklin came in at two ninety-four, Bobby came in at two sixty-two, Roosevelt came in at two seventy-seven, Lincoln was projected, budgeted for at three sixty-two. We use the side of the class.
So what's missing from that information is the timeframe.
Absolutely.
Roosevelt and Franklin and Bobby were been prepared years ago now.
To me, and we're getting, just getting a little further, if you're to our bigger problem, not just Lincoln, to me, the question is, how much does that timeframe cost? How much like this difference can we attribute specifically just to the market forces and escalation? And if it's not the whole enchilada, then what else is escalating costs on all our, all of our projects? Does that make sense?
That makes sense, and Jesse, you probably also have read, did an exercise for grant cost specific demand, just escalating grant costs massive, because that's.
I did an exercise, it was like in January, February, and I looked at where Madison was at that time compared to Franklin and Grant, put it in a cost per square foot and escalated it. And at that time, like, they were all within a five million dollar range when I did that exercise. So that's where I was like looking at my cost compared to the other two, and I was like, well, okay, I guess that's in the right time, you know, that's in the right zone, once you apply escalation.
So.
Correct.
What was the initial Lincoln master plan estimate? And again, I know, I know stuff happened after that, but just. The, the hard cost estimate from January 2017 was a hundred and twenty-four million.
But the total project.
Wait, so one twenty-four, which compares with whatever.
One forty-six.
One eighty-two.
One eighty-two.
Twenty-eight.
So one twenty-four versus one eighty-two. And that's, again, we captured that in the last board meeting, where we took the, the total progression from those estimates to today.
So that one twenty-four included the design for TPC, CTC, and. No, no, didn't include escalation either.
So that's my, essentially, that's my question. So on page thirty-eight, we get a subtotal dollars per square foot. The subtotal is three forty-two. And then underneath that, you have all these contingencies, and that adds up to five oh-six. So, are we comparing apples to apples?
We're not, no. When you look at first number from due diligence, that was a raw number with no escalation, no escalates, et cetera.
Right, because we're.
It was not.
Well, no, because that was.
Well, the initial master plan, first, not the bond number, but the master plan, the first master plan, there's a master plan number, there's a bond number, there's a grant number. So I'm asking what the initial master plan number is. And you gave me the answer by the time that.
Well, because at the time, January 2017, we were carrying escalation and contingency outside of the estimators. So that's why it's difficult to take, go back and take that estimate and line it up and say, this one, it's not quite apples to apples. And you understand why they're.
It drives us nuts too.
Yes, yeah.
It drives us nuts too. Like, you read an article and it'll talk about dollars per square foot of a project, and then my question is, is that the total project budget? Is it the hard costs? Is it this? And like, the articles don't say anything, and yet everybody's comparing that stuff and though it's the same. So the language you use really.
To me, I mean, and I, this, I would say, here's our estimated cost, and we're building an X amount of contingency on top of that. And that's what I would tell. That's what I would tell the public and say, we know construction, and anybody who's done a kitchen remodel knows that stuff happens, and we've got a contingency for that. This is kind of our best estimate right now for what's really happening.
So, yeah, so if we, going on that, so if we look at the cost per square foot per per grant from that in, and Franklin and Roosevelt, I think, can you say that Madison looks like.
I didn't say.
I don't even know what.
Okay.
Go Jesse, way to tell.
I know, I was just saying.
He's done a lot of. There are three hundred dollars per square foot that was mentioned about something. So, before you guys have contingencies included, this is coming in at three forty-two. And then on top of that, you've got all these contingencies. So what's the apples to apples comparison? I mean, in terms of, like, so all of these contingencies, that's the combination of risk because stuff happens, plus escalation, right?
Correct.
Well, and also looking at that design contingency, that ten percent, that is there because at the level of design we have now, a lot of things are undefined. And so there's a certain amount that the estimator just doesn't have to look at yet, and so we need to carry that, because we know that the design is undefined, there's more information, it's gonna be more costified.
I'm not questioning the contingencies. I'm trying to wrap my head around, how many dollars do we get? You know, like, there's a very big number we get short, and how do we get? And I'm actually a little comforted by the.
Three forty-two.
Square, I don't know, square foot?
So that, that, that is very similar to what the projected cost per square foot was before, but who knows what that figure, what that figure was supposed to represent on that side there, is supposed to have.
And we also know some, I were an enterprise reporter, I do our, and looking at and doing some comparisons.
Well, we, and we always have that.
Right.
But we need this information, because there's so much different information out there, but it's not using, like, the same set of terminology. And we should just agree on what it's gonna be and know that there's gonna be some variation. But we can't complain about reporters getting it wrong or community numbers, like, when they say something to you, and you're like, no, it's not right, we're gonna get back. Like, we're not helping ourselves, having all this information and already different documents, using a whole bunch of different standards, different numbers, different formulas. It's just like, I, yeah, it's gonna be maybe a tough thing to look at when we get the numbers because of, you know, the increase in numbers, like, we're all using the same terminology and numbers.
Okay, we've got four minutes left. I don't think we can use the direction that we need.
There's actually three, two or three things I'd like to talk about. We have three different options for cost reduction, and great condition, we'll put it on that. So really, our options for, for reducing costs is to cut for a very flexible, because abroad, there are lots of other available. So we, we put those in the kind of three, three bundles, of which you can sort of take any one of those, you can mix them up, you can include all of them. We said, let's look at the leading some select spaces that are kind of listed as optional in the aspects. We could look at, you know, the choir room or the choir practice room or, you know, combined restroom. or, you know, combined restroom.
It's important.
It's the same idea, we've just applied some more information. Or is there specific square footage?
These have specific square footage is. So that's sort of one family of options. If you took all of those, you might say between two point eight and three point one, believe me. We looked at the wider range, and we said, well, what if we needed scope? If not, you'd have curriculum or student capacity. So these are things like the youth care center, the health center, those closet, you know, the running track, the energy facility, the grandstand. I mean, these are all pretty drastic cuts. But if you were to say prioritize core curriculum, student capacity, these are things that could be considered. So if you took everything on there, that's another nine-ish million dollars.
So is that two point seven for the enrollment cap?
It's twenty-seven hundred square foot.
Probably not a twenty-one. There are five members associated.
We can come up with specific nine-one ones.
So maybe we use super multiple to actually have our company just break down this discussion. Because that's not, you know, have that information. It seems like this is what we're doing, we're getting to know each other. Because switching this, between sides, and then trying to remember, I was hoping that this is the only way we can exercise.
And then, and the dollar points, you know, for him at the emergency.
He hadn't been, he's not been able to work.
Yeah. What option is, is that you try?
And then the third option is to look at a series of quality, qualitative conduct. So, deleting the lead requirement, trying to negotiate the resensions. And they have some districts that have done that, and they're really pushing. You're seeing the technical standards, I'm not too specific to say about that. And then there's certain types of roofing, and types of glass, and we call for the potential to say anything. Things like changing, obviously, changing the grass, which... Those are the kind, actually, those are the three boxes that we have to consider.
Is that the option C?
Which one, the partner?
Our partner health plan.
So, the Jackson, Jacksonville Foundation, the family has come forward, with an offer to fund some programming and equipment related to some foster classes. If there was a space, we're looking at trying to pick out one more health classroom and some programming classes to make that happen. If that space were to go away, obviously, that's...
Or can I bring a private health center? That more like a workout.
Really, yeah, it's related to exercises. It's really more related to P E and athletic.
Is it P E space, not...
Who that, and also classroom size.
Can you please bring the other spaces that were...
Not mine.
Because I have special...
This one needs a note, too, is, it's kind of like building, this is building to the minimum head stack, you know, right under fifty feet or something. So we're just asking for flexibility within that total square footage to do some specific things. Because every, the other thing that really makes the difference, every space is gonna be used all the time. We're building for seventeen hundred, but we have seventeen hundred and twenty kids. And we're used to using every space, every area. It's a little bit different than when you're talking about building, where you currently have eleven hundred, or nine hundred, or thirteen hundred kids. And when you talk about a running track, I mean, I could see it in Oregonian, like, we can get special running track. But we're not meeting the athletic specs. So the district athletic spec says you need a football field, a soccer field, six tennis courts, like baseball or softball diamond. And we are going to have a football field, half or a third of a soccer field. No tennis courts, no baseball diamond, no second, second full field. So, when you put the running track, we're gonna pay for half of the running track. So I think it was a million and one for the other half of the running track. You're now getting nowhere near the end specs for athletics. Or when you talk about a wrestling room. You know, some of those things we're just saying, take the athletic spec and let us be flexible within our tower. It's a thing vertically in this project, which is really, you know, different for Portland, but not different for Australia or New York. But you have to think vertically. You could get closer to meeting the end specs, without going over the square footage, but you have to think flexibly. So it's just really, and it's still once in a hundred years to ask ourselves to think flexibly, not for more space, but a hundred and fifty square feet, of the minimum head specs. Not more space, but to think flexibly of how we chop up that space.
Okay, but if that's the case, why are there additional costs? I mean, is this just based on the impact?
Well, it's not additional cost, it's basically taking that out and reducing the size.
You're giving some practice, these exercises, it's a, it's a value.
Right. But if you recall, you know, these spaces were all created based on some kind of trade-off that had the minimum required area for comprehensive. So if one of these goes out, then we've got less area than the minimum required.
And to meet the specs, just for transport, they've got several million dollars, but we're just trading it into a half of a running track. Because we're not going to be able to meet the specs. So it would be additional cost to meet the specs, but we can't do it unless you put a full soccer field on the eighth floor. That would be a lot more than the one million dollars for the indoor track to finish it out. So we're still just trying to meet the end specs. That's what we told the community, we're going to try and do, is meet the specs. The minimum end specs for athletics. So, I think the end specs for athletics is gonna be entirely a conversation based on our grant fields. And then looking at, we have a lot of resources, probably the previous ones that has everything there. And I think, and part of this is gonna be a conversation with parks and broader community about how do we manage that. But I think we should be really careful about meeting, talking about media, because there's, we haven't done that with all of our previous projects. You're probably waiting in the future, meaning we need to have a bigger systems conversation, is what I would say, just for the athletes. I want to make sure that we have a discussion, if we have the data on the teen center.
Yeah.
Oh, summer, just a little bit of that.
So we have, I think we have a, a panel here. In the morning. It's a little bit, kind of talks about, you know, where, it doesn't look like it's us. On the table, but this is the hospital. I never got what I requested about the teen center utilization. I haven't, yes. Oh, that's another handout stock? Where? I don't have that. So, we, we finished in sessions up here. Oh, sorry, where is it? It's coming around, hot off of that, the hop. So, if you just asked for a time, there are questions like this. Okay, we're going over, by the way. Oh, please, man, here. Appreciate it. Um, we're gonna have, I think we have a hot show five forty, anyways. Anybody who has to leave? Let's see if you just...
Do you have, do you want this, this information?
Yes.
Karina, do you want to walk this through?
No, no.
So this is in response to questions, and, sorry. I do.
Oh, thank you.
So this was in response to questions, and my response is with the budget office, where this was, well, there's some of this information is District Y program, and some of it is up here, is in response to Franklin's specific question. So, I'm just gonna, that's what that is. With regard to teen parent services, part of what we have is how many students do we have, and what are the different availabilities at the different centers? So we have sixteen slots at Roosevelt, sixteen eight slots at Madison.
And when you say, when you say slots, do you mean that this is currently how many students we are serving and given reverse for?
Or, so we have, so yes. And we, so what we have is we have sixteen slots at Roosevelt. We have, that's a tape, eight slots at Madison, eight slots at Grant. And we had, the reason that this says eight slots at Franklin on the top, I clarified that this afternoon, is that the second classroom at Franklin was not ready all year, and so that finished during the year. So when we go into this next year, we will have two classrooms, so we'll have sixteen slots available for sixteen little ones.
That's children in the year, right?
Children.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, like, when you say slots, are they all filled with kids?
A slot is a little person, babies, yeah.
But it looks like we only have four Franklin and Buster students who are actually, actually utilizing Franklin.
Because we did the other dependent system.
So some of them are, some of them are, and I apologize, the teen parent vice principal is not available to be here today, but some of them were, when I asked that exact question, who are the kids? Some of them were Cleveland students. Some of them were kids at Southeast Works, you know, in the, that are attending Franklin Childcare last year. So, so part of what we have is we have a number, we don't have childcare facilities at all of our schools. And so, we also work with, where is, how do we meet the needs of students that have need for childcare, that don't have a family resource, that don't, that are in need of childcare? And so some of them are students from other schools, hopefully more, hopefully closer in proximity with geography. One of the things you'll see in bold, though, is when you looked at the teen parents by zip code, there's twenty sixteen parents. It's in bold, what athletes announce as notes, under the family colored box, that within the Franklin zip code boundary, there are twenty sixteen parents.
But they're, does that mean some of them are getting services, or they're getting services house?
It means some of them are out, some of them probably are not in school. It means some of them are at other, other schools. It means some of them have a family, thankfully have family that care for their kids while they're in school. But they're also at, we have a number of students, the majority of our teen parents are actually in alternative schools. And so part of what we're trying to do, as we know, PPS follows state, state and national trends with the number one barrier to high school graduation is access to childcare. And so we have, when we looked and did that research, looking at having that tier-one strategy around how do you provide access to childcare so we can keep students in their comprehensives, in their neighborhood schools, and provide that, and provide that service for them? So that's where we are. One of the other things I want to just say really quickly, and then I want to let folks ask me questions, and I'm happy to share. But I want to say that part of what we do, have done with teen parent childcare and teen parent services, is work really deeply with the state, with Salem. And so it was previously, it was O D E, but it was Oregon Department of Employment had the childcare division. And then within the last year, the contract has moved over to DHS. And so we actually have a reimbursement grant also. And the criteria and the stipulations for the reimbursement grant were that they had to be served on-site. So it was either workforce, if you, if workers have childcares on-site, then they could apply for reimbursement from Salem, from the state, or if K-12 education systems did, then they, secondary schools could apply on-site. So I just want to say two numbers, and that is that there is a reimbursement contract for, I don't know if you can look for it. Hundred, thank you, hundred ninety-one thousand for the upcoming year. And then there is a childcare contract that we have, that we look at lineup for, and I don't have the...
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Okay, so, so are PPS staff using the...
No, there is, there are zero PPS employees that have, that are utilizing teen parent services to help them there.
Okay, so I'm confused, if there's twenty sixteen teen parents within Franklin's zip code, how come that this aggregated chart shows only four students?
Because...
Because they're just choosing somewhere else?
They're choosing somewhere else, they might not attend Franklin High School. They're choosing somewhere else, or they have family, or they're, or they, they have, we have other kids from other schools. Like, for instance, if it was continuity of care, and we had, I don't know who the Cleveland student is, just as an example, but if it's continuity of care, if there had been a Cleveland student, once they get into childcare, we try, we keep those kids into childcare through when their, when their parents graduate.
If I understand, say, a Franklin student starts their child in childcare, and then the student elects to go to the Lions, the child's still gonna stay at Franklin?
The child would have access to, the family would have access to keep that child in their same childcare at Franklin.
Okay.
Our teen parent social, school social workers work with that student and family to say how, what would, what would be the best fit for your family situation around case management services?
So it's fair to say that most of our teen parents are not utilizing these school-based services?
So, we have more teen parents that are not in comprehensives, that are served in alternative schools, that are served in comprehensives. And so, with regard to that, we are, we are always continuing with our re-engagement work to try to get our teen parents into, back into school and into stable childcare resources, whether that's family, or whether that's with a provider. But who is, who's gonna be stable as a provider? And so there are, I would just say, a lot of families who start, or students who start and say, I think I can make it work, and I have a plan in my family. And then sometimes, six months later, or nine months later, that actually doesn't happen. And then, we're seeking childcare, we want to help those students have a childcare option as close to their homes as possible. So we do that, we help with that kind of place.
I'm really surprised, though, because it's like last year, just like month by month, like, there wasn't a lot of variation. December and January, it went from four to three, but pretty much four the rest of the year.
And that's why I'd asked about that, but that's where I understood that the second childcare space was not completed until towards the end of this year, as far as in bonus. The other thing I wanted to say is there's a line in here that talks about community, and there's been questions about that. One of the things that we negotiated, when we negotiated with Albina Early Head Start, is that when our students, in working towards college and career readiness for all of our students, when our students graduate from Franklin Childcare or Madison, when our, when their parents graduate from high school, our students, our PPS graduates, go to the front of the line for all of our cities, us for eight, for all eight head starts that we negotiated with, with Ron London and Elaine Henderson, to say, because what we want to do is, one, for votes, is we want students who just graduated, is what is your post-secondary plan? Or, and/or if you're raising your family and you're, and you're caring for the economic needs of your family, how do we continue that employment? And so how do we do that, to continue that act? So, through when the little ones go, early head start ends at thirty-six months. And so through, so the little ones can really get that early education until they transition into a, into a formal pre-camp for a three-year-old or four-year-old. And so that's one of the things, too, sometimes when we look at who, if there's community slots, our first option always is, are they, are there other PPS grads? Did they, for instance, graduate for, from Roosevelt, but they want to go to PCC Southeast Campus, or something like that? Campus or something like that? And so how do we help our kids, um, in those processes? So if there's community slots, our number one hope is for community slots is that they would be PPS graduates making that transition.
I'm sorry, the, the PPS graduates, are they part of our program or just PPS graduates?
PPS teen parents.
So can I, um, can we get the same parent distribution for the other schools?
Absolutely.
And my questions are, um, do we have excess capacity and do we have waitlist for any of our teen parent centers, and do we have any excess capacity?
Yeah, same question, but I was gonna ask it, what is your assessment of supply?
So I would love to get all of that information and come back to folks with that. Um, I think what we have had in the past is that we, it has varied, we've had variation around parts of town, around different areas and different neighborhoods.
And that in particular would be, would be helpful because we're right now looking at Lincoln.
Right, that's why we asked this.
Yes, what I was gonna say, so the question is, should there be a, a teen parent center?
Okay.
So one of the things I would just remind people is, when we look at the boundaries of Lincoln High School, is that we have the downtown area, so we have the downtown shelter, so we also have our alternative schools of New Avenue's for use and outside in. And so it also just, I mean, if we're gonna get the information, that would also be important information for everyone to have.
I mean, we're, we are up against it, like, we gotta make decisions, and whatever data we can get to inform these decisions is gonna be helpful.
And, I mean, while you're here, I don't wanna miss the opportunity to just ask, so you've got other strategies for how to serve teen parents in the district as part of your overall reconnection and getting to graduation beyond strategy? Um, how valuable and necessary do you think these investments of site-based, additional site-based teen parent centers are?
I think they're game changers.
You do, you think it is, you think it is a very important part of your reconnection and graduation college and career strategy?
I think for us as a district, to really look at all the kids that are in the catchment of any boundary, is we have teen parents in every catchment, some, some higher in some, in some zip codes and some lower in other zip codes, but we have teen parents across our city.
And it is really important to point out that it's not just the kids who are enrolled in that building, but they might be, because, fair, right, within that there.
Brendan, I'm sorry, I do wanna ask, I'm confused by this, why does the largest program have only, uh, half-time social worker, as opposed to the other two that have full-time?
So, so part of it is gonna be where all the, where all the teen parents are, so that, that should be, and again, that's, um, Ms. James who does that with her program, but it's a distribution of, one, with geography, and two, by the number of teen parents we have. There was also, the reason I added that, or that was added, was because, um, there was a question about how much FTE is PPS putting at Franklin, and I wanted to just be clear that while we have teen parent staff on certain SMTs, where they have a computer and where they have a phone line, every staff has the responsibility of eight to ten schools. So nobody is just at one school.
So one of the reasons why I asked some of the questions about the detailed space is, when the conversation was happening with Franklin, which has a solid footprint, they, the, the district said, everybody's gonna have them, and then also Franklin got the hundred percent utilization, and so within their footprint, they, even though there wasn't data, district-wide data shared, um, it was like, this is what Franklin's gonna get, and it was at the, like, a classroom trade-off versus, um, you know, we're gonna additive. So I guess my question is, just the broader systems question is, just consistently across the district, what is, what does the data show, what we need at all our schools? It shouldn't be a classroom versus, or, but it was, like it was at Franklin, um, conversation. So, again, this is the bad thing about backing down first, Franklin has definitely anything big and all this, but I think we should, when we look at these numbers, think about in the context of, what do we actually need system-wide at every school, and, you know, maybe, maybe it was the wrong call at Franklin, how it was done, but what lessons have we learned from that?
Well, truly, I think the message, because this isn't a conversation about additive, this is a conversation about, in, in hard, we're up against a wall times, one of the places we could cut and remove, cause we, we could use that as a classroom too, if, if it's not needed, but one of the things that was explained to us is, and probably to Franklin too.
You have to have it.
You have to have it, it's some partner, and it has to be used for teen parenting, whether you have a teen parent in your program or not.
Correct, this is, so I'm.
It's the same conversation as Franklin, not different.
Right, but it, when it happened with Franklin, it wasn't a district-wide, they said, well, everybody's gonna have it, and I think it's useful to say, and look at the data, and now say, like, is, do we, do we make the right call?
Okay, um, do you have to go? Um, so I'm, I'm gonna, did you get what you need? I don't think you did. Okay, so we still need to make a decision about whether or not to delete anything, if so what? And I, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that in five minutes.
We also didn't even talk about the health center. So I, you want me to, like, put out a, if I were looking at this, I would think, on page forty-one, I would, just as a starting point for, um, giving some savings, um, take all these savings with the exception of the health center, the teen parents center with an asterisk for more data, grandstands, the technical standards, and the turk de grass. And I say the turk de grass just because Lincoln was the first school to have a turk, so I, I think, if, if we didn't put it in, they'd just pay for it anyway, um, it doesn't make any sense, especially with the amount of utilization you get. So I had a conversation with Dan the other day about some of these trade-offs, and, um, I did delete, delete requirements, there's, there's some netting here that you can do, same thing with negotiate the, the exception, but, you know, just to start with, like, how many of these you could take without having, and still, I think, have equity across the district, and I, just being in the Franklin zone, look at what, some of the value engineered things that got taken out of there related to security, um, no locking front door, no vestibule, is that right, Dan?
The, the front door, it does not have a vestibule.
So, I mean, would I wanna, do I wanna build with all of this? The answer is yes, but I don't think we have the budget, so that's just a, from my, talking ahead of ideas, and having, having a conversation with Dan and Eric, that's just, well, I think that.
So just to get clarity, you'd say you cut all this stuff on page forty-one with a couple of exceptions?
And, and with not.
I guess on program additions, so just for, uh, total reduction.
Trying to.
No, no, I'm, I'm just trying to, to get clarity out, what, what you said.
Correct. Can you repeat it?
Two of ours down on the left.
Can I ask a clarifying question about these different options? So these are, these are packaged as, like, an option, option A, the option B.
No, you can, you can pick and choose.
Okay, so each of these things can be separated out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's what we're gonna end up having to do.
Do you like a price on each one?
Needs to mind, um, let's, let's take a straw poll, not now, um, I'll send out a survey monkey, um, it would be helpful if you could specify what the savings would be on each of these things.
But I just wanna remind everyone also that when we approved the Madison master plan, we basically added to the scope when we approved the master plan.
So we did not, so we're going to do this exercise, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, we should do a equitable.
So we're actually, um, we approved a range of Madison, they're coming back with a schematic design, along with potential.
And I called this, we, we said, I mean, I know for myself personally, I thought I will, I vote this going forward if we do get back to a range of cost savings, which I don't know the process for that.
Maybe the cost savings on these items?
That was with the Madison conversation, when we're saying, okay, we're gonna approve this master plan without knowing how we're gonna pay for it.
Well, I mean, for example, um, Madison, Madison, they don't have a dedicated wrestling room, they combine dance, which is what the ed spec is, dance and wrestling, and I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna suggest any of these, like, I'd rather, I'd love to put the wood construction, uh, the construction program in too, but I, I just think we've got a huge program, and I don't see how we're gonna.
I mean, I just, obviously, survey monkey is not a man deal, but at least, you need to get at least some sense of where the board is, and then, and then we can talk about it. Um, and we're probably, I don't know when we gotta talk about it, but we gotta talk about it, um, because, you know, eyes on the prize, we need a decision by the twenty-eighth. On the twenty-eighth, yes or no, thumbs up, thumbs down, or, or else?
About the decision-making on the twenty-eighth, um, what, what we were saying to me, if we have any significant changes coming after the twenty-eighth, it could cost delays.
Cover square footage by ten or something.
These are really important decisions, and, and just, I wanna make sure that we're not rushing to decisions, even though time is of the essence, um, and.
Eric, I'm, I'm sorry, please define significant, because the board is gonna obsess over that over the next three months if you don't.
Well, you.
Oh, well, everybody will lock in step with me, I'll.
How would you define significant?
Please.
Well, so, uh, leading the grandstand, well, the scope is significant for us, we haven't really even drawn it yet, so that's not a big change to us considering our scope. At this point, taking the choir room out would be a significant change for us. Uh, I think taking teen parent and health center out would be a significant change to us, we'd have to rework, really, all our floor plans.
Maybe when you put together the list for the survey monkey, it comes with like a level one, two, and three of how hard it would be.
Sure, you can do that.
Low, medium, high.
And also, if any, um, if any of these reductions change our status relative to maybe the ed specs.
It would all be reductions, um, based on requirement, so.
We're at the minimum of requirement.
Yeah, so any deducted space would be, the program would be below the base minimum requirement of the ed spec.
Right, and so that's, that's a different animal.
In terms of square footage, but not necessarily in terms of usage. So, the, the IB class, the IB interview rooms, I mean, you're still.
We harvested that room from other spaces.
And they'd be.
They're, they're not IB interview rooms, that, that was some kind of miscommunication. These are collaborative spaces for all students to use all the time, cause we're, we're really shifting our construction in all the schools, and it was part of the ed spec to have smaller collaborative spaces, flexible spaces, we don't add to.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I've said this before, I, I mean, if it's not, cause I'm building a bit, I wanna build a building for the next hundred years, I don't know if IB is gonna be there.
No, it's not about IB.
Okay, then, then, then IB needs to be taken out of stuff, and you need to tell me what it is, cause, you know, and same, ditto with model UN, I mean.
Can I clarify both of those things?
Sure.
There is no post-dedicated model UN on this program.
Okay, so why?
It's just, all of this is a double-sized classroom.
Right, that was, that was not our intent at all, I don't know how that happened, I wasn't up there, so it's not.
It's just, and, and kids have a divider in it, so if you don't need it, that's it, then.
Why is it described on this, programs above minimum recommended ed specs?
It's the larger socratic style classroom, it's just a larger space?
I'm just saying, all, all of these right here, why, why are they in that category of programs above?
Because the ed specs don't specifically.
Choir room, for example, is an optional space, so it's not a minimum required space, but to get the choir room, we reduce the other required space to have that trade-off, because we did not wanna grow larger than that base minimum required.
You just think about the kids.
Actually, we didn't reduce it at Madison, we just said, it's been built in another school, so we took all of the minimums and said, we're building choir two.
We reduced the classroom sizes.
What you're basically doing is supporting successful programs in the school, I mean, as well as, as well as changing, moving space, you're moving kids, so the kids are in the choir room because it's a really successful program, instead of being in a different program somewhere else in the school, so you think, as you move square footage, you're moving people with it.
Okay, but, you know, it's a successful choir program now, I, I even have a choir program, I don't know, I, I mean, I, to some degree, you know, specialized space, you know, but then there are other specialized spaces that I don't want.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we are way over, people have to leave.
Can I, can I ask, just for whatever the, the scoring, how we're gonna set it up? And Dan, Eric, we talked about this the other day, but the, um, the cost, we need to have here results in higher operating costs? Well, what we talked about is, yeah, you could save two and a half million, and maybe you get a hundred thousand dollar increase annual in operating costs, and that's, you just, you need to know what that is, because these generic descriptions don't describe it, and that's the negotiate the get exemption, so two and a half million, but what's that interview cost?
You can provide a rough order of magnitude of payback.
And, I mean, and I would like to figure out some parallel process with Madison, because when we looked at the Madison master plan, we did the opposite of what we're doing now, we actually, the board added scope, um, in that process, fairly significantly. Um, and so if we are making a policy shift to say, due to our budget constraints, we are going to build these high schools below the standards of our educational specifications, which are the marching orders that we've given to all of our design teams, then that's kind of, that's a new approach, and we need to take that lens back to every project, saying we can't meet the ed specs.
We're gonna wanna see comparisons, you know, point five point comparison, who's got what, we're, okay?
Yeah, now.
Some of us will work with these guys to come up with some sort of instrument to hold.
So it's really important and complex, I'm glad we dedicated time, as a whole group, to dive into this, we got another load of information, we get some more questions, and we know what the timeline is, and we're just gonna have to come after it. And, and, while, while they, while they appreciate the comparison between schools, I wanna make sure everybody's treated fairly, what we saw with the twenty-twelve, when we get into Franklin got this, Rosemont got that.
No, no, I'm not, I totally agree, I'm not coming out of the, I'm coming out of the data policy perspective of.
This is a caution for us not to go down that road, because that's.
Well, this is the higher level question, which is, yesterday, we said we're building to our ed specs, and new people go out and do this and come back and tell us how much it costs, and, and it sounds like there's some appetite for tomorrow saying, we can't afford to build to our ed specs, and so we're gonna have to revisit everything that's involved, cause that's different part.
I appreciate your point.
And on Brendan Martin's memo, uh, I wanna make a couple of points here. Grant's clinic was being grossly underutilized because, apparently unique among our school clinics, the county arbitrarily decided to only accept, uh, patients who are on the Oregon Health Plan. Not a lot of kids in the Grant cluster on the Oregon Health Plan, so that artificially brought it down. Uh, and also, right now, we are talking with Providence to be the new medical provider for Grant when it opens. Uh, so I, for my part, I think that a health clinic is an enormous gender equity issue, I think it's an enormous economic equity issue, and I really do not wanna see that cut, and I think we can absolutely find somebody good to lead the night when it opens.
Okay. All right, this is not satisfying to anybody, I get that, but here it is. We'll work to come up with some sort of instrument to get, get a sense of rigordius. And then we'll figure out what to.
It'll, it'll be a couple of days.